Good evening, everyone. Can we call the meeting to a water and please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first part of our meeting this evening is going to be the public hearing of our proposed Proposition 1 and 2. Our superintendent will start it off and then we'll go from there.
So welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening to hear about our proposed capital project. Our vote is coming up on October 18th. Before I begin, I do want to just extend some thank yous to the members of our community and more that have worked for the last 14 months or so putting this project together. As you know, the board and the district have been working for quite some time now to get this capital project to where we are today. So I would like to thank our support services committee, which is Alvarone, Tom Miller, Ed Mizell, Lindsay Idell, Peter Miller, myself, and at one point Victoria McLaren, when she was our business official. So thanks to those folks for all the work that they've been doing behind the scenes. I also would like to just mention board members in general. The lengthy conversations that have been had over the course of the last 12 to 14 months to prioritize the needs of the district, that would be present board members as well as past board members. So I would like to thank them for their insight. Our financial advisors from Bernard Donigan's office, they're here with us this evening. Multiple runs and scenarios of parts of the project, so countless hours, and we really appreciate what you've done for us. CS Arch, our architectural firm, they were the guiding force behind our building condition survey and really identified the needs of things that we needed to do within the district to break our aging infrastructure up to current standards. So thank you to CS Arch. Our PR partners at Ulster Bosse's and CS Arch for helping to get the message out to our community. They helped with the flyers, with the video that you're going to be seeing in just a moment, really encapsulating our project for the community. And then the community at large, both internally within our district and externally, giving feedback on different aspects of the project over the last year. So really guided some of the conversations that we had many evenings at the board table so that we can get to where we are tonight. So this evening, we're going to start out with a video that was created by CS Arch and Ulster Bosse's. Again, it encapsulates our project. Then we're going to hear from our financial advisors. They're going to remind us of where we are and why doing a project at this time is in the best interest of the district financially. And then we also have a member of CS Arch on hand to answer any specifics about the project components. And then we'll open it up to just generally questions for the board, the support services, CS Arch, and Bernard Donigan's office. So we're going to get started right away with our... It's about seven minutes. I know some folks here probably have already seen it. Bear with us, we want it to be played because we also want the community that might not have been able to be here tonight to see the whole video.
On Tuesday, October 18th, the Highland Central School District community will vote on a capital project proposition for $16.9 million that was strategically designed to not increase the local tax levy.
By continuing to look at our strategic plan, we've identified aging infrastructure issues that need to be addressed. This work can be done without increasing the tax level.
This was possible through long-range planning that considered the schedule for retiring debt payments. In addition, the state is projected to reimburse almost 72 cents of every dollar of able project costs. Finally, almost $1.9 million has been saved in the voter-approved capital reserve, which can be applied to the project. Once combined, Proposition 1 can be completed with no local tax levy increase. This was a priority identified by the community in 2014 and 2015 when the Board of Education engaged stakeholders in discussions about how best to plan for and fund facility improvements.
We heard again and again that the taxpayers want smaller, more frequent projects so that there is not a significant spike to the tax levy. The Board of Education listened, and we are planning those upgrades now following this method.
Voters will also be presented with a second proposition for $4.6 million to make improvements to the athletic field and track at the high school. If approved, the taxpayer with the basic star exemption would see an estimated tax increase of $1 a month for $100,000 full value assessment. So how did this project come about? In 2021, a team of architects and engineers completed the district's five-year building condition survey, which is a comprehensive report that is required by New York State. Proposition 1 includes the highest priority need from the report that could be addressed without increasing the tax levy.
Bouncing student and taxpayer needs can be very complicated, and this project reflects the board's commitment to this responsibility. Providing our students can stay up for the safe, healthy, and functional learning environment as well as ensuring that we're protecting our taxpayers' investment in our facilities by keeping them in good working condition is an important responsibility that the Board of Education takes very seriously.
So what's included in the project? End-of-life boilers in all the buildings will be replaced with energy-efficient models. Many heating and ventilation systems will be upgraded to improve air quality and increase fresh air exchange. Air conditioning will be added at all four of the district's cafeterias and in the high school gymnasium, all spaces that have high occupancy and are used for school and community events. At the high school, worn and damaged classroom floors and walls will be replaced, including asbestos abatement. Outdated HVAC and electrical systems, plumbing and wall finishes will be replaced in identified office spaces. Undersized corner lockers will be replaced. An eight-by-30-foot press box will be constructed, and home team bleachers will be extended to provide additional seating capacity. At the middle school, interior in and masonry on numerous stair railings and ramps will be rehabilitated. VE end-of-life plumbing will be replaced. Antiquated fire alarm systems will be upgraded, and hot water tanks and pumps that are no longer in use will be removed. At the elementary school, 24 classrooms will be renovated to remove non-functioning manual closing walls from 1971. Ward ceilings, floor tiles, and lighting will be replaced, and the electrical capacity will be upgraded. The antiquated corridor ceiling system from 1971 will also be replaced. The modified softball field will be rehabbed by expanding and leveling the outfield and improving drainage. Fencing will be installed around the rear playground area to enhance safety, and an outdoor classroom pavilion will be added. And at the bus garage, an antiquated end-of-life bus lift will be replaced, and then an additional lift will be added. For a complete list of the proposed work, visit the district website. While Proposition 1 reflects basic bricks and mortar upgrades, Proposition 2 asks taxpayers to enhance student programs by updating the athletic field and track at the high school.
I'm very happy that we are being given the opportunity to vote on a proposal that would give us facilities very similar or comparable to the facilities that we are on when we go to other schools. About half of our student body participates in sports, and they will be benefiting directly from this.
A major upgrade supported by Proposition 2 is installing turf on the field.
One of the benefits of having a turf field over our grass field would enable us to have overlapping practices and not worry about burnout of the field.
Adding a concession stand area and bathroom facilities is also planned, as well as track improvements.
The improvements to the athletic area here will bring upon many great opportunities for the track and field athletes. The new surfacing will make this track look and feel great for the athletes. We will have a new steeplechase pit, which is a really fun and exciting race that many athletes are going to be very interested in trying. And then with our new timing system, not only will our home meet be great, but we can also maybe bring in bigger schools and do some invitationals and really have a very well-functioning program here and hopefully get more students involved as well.
Turf will allow the field to be used by multiple teams for competitions, conditioning, and practices, and reduce the need for weather-related event cancellations.
One example of having a turf field would be in the spring. We could utilize that field for practicing baseball and softball. We have two JV teams and two varsity teams, which pretty much are always locked into the gymnasium during that first two weeks of March. But by having a turf field, those teams will be able to go outside and be able to throw a ball around, maybe take some back in practice and get some other things done outside, which they normally would not be able to do indoors.
Physical education classes will also be able to use the facility, benefiting all 9 through 12 grade students. If approved, work on the project will begin in the summer of 2023 and is anticipated to be completed by fall of 2024.
I encourage our voters to come out to the polls on Tuesday, October 18th, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the Highland High School band room. I would like to thank the Highland community for their continued trust of me and our Highland Board of Education. We value and appreciate the relationship we've built with the Highland community over the years. And we encourage anyone with questions to please reach out. Okay, so that pretty much encapsulates the project. We'll answer questions about the project in detail at the end of the presentation. But I would like to turn it over to our reps from Bernard Donigan's office, Chris and Nick, and they will walk through our financial group.
Is it the board from this show?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Charloff. I'm a financial consultant with Bernard Donigan Incorporated. I'm also joined by Nick Barcelona. He's a financial analyst in our office. What we'll do is show a few slides for you to show where the district has in terms of your existing local share for your existing building projects to show an opportunity that's coming up for the district to layer in a new proposed capital project with Prop 1 being a no additional tax impact and Prop 2 with the project with turf fields and Prop 2 that's slightly going over your current existing local share and quantify how much that is for the taxpayers. So the first slide that we have here is a look at the district's existing local share. That's your building debt service on all your existing capital projects less all of your building aid that's being paid out on all your current capital projects. So this is the local share. This is what hits the tax levy for your current capital project. So you can see in 2024 this whole year, right here, there's a drop-off in your local share. So that's due to this retiring debt that's coming off the books. So what that is, we can see that is an opportunity for the district to fill that in with a proposed capital project. The next slide then takes the Proposition 1 local share for the debt service less the building aid for Proposition 1. And it layers in that blue chart to create a new chart for us here. And you can see, even including the Proposition 1 project with your local share, it's fitting within that drop-off in the debt service local share. And so it's no additional tax impact to the taxpayers. Props 1 and 2 combined takes that blue chart and the orange chart, and then also layers in Prop 2 on top of that. So you can see in thistle years 24 through 32, we are slightly going over our current local share bar chart. So that is an additional impact, there is a tax impact to that going over the bar that we currently have for our local share. So to quantify that on a marginal increase basis in thistle years 24 to 32, for a $100,000 full value house with no star, that would equate to $17 per year with star and ball dog per year, or with senior star, $4 per year. You can see we've included the monthly values there. We've also extrapolated out by another $25,000 and $50,000. I'd like to focus on the $100,000 because that's easy for people to take that and multiply by their full value property. So that's really it for the slides that I have. So just wanted to say, you know, for a voter-approved project in New York State, we currently get building aid at about 71.7%. So by doing a capital project and voting on it and approving it, we're able to get some additional work done and minimize the local share impact of that project. The district has needs based on the building condition survey, and a lot of these items would need to be addressed through the maintenance budget. And if they're not done through a voter-approved project, we wouldn't get that building aid back on them. So it makes a lot of sense for these scope items to be combined into a capital project approved by the voters to get that building aid reimbursement back and minimize the local share impact to the taxpayers.
So Chris, one of the questions that has come up in the last couple of weeks is there's been some adjustments with taxes in certain municipalities. I know Lindsay had spoken to you about that before. Can you talk a little bit about how we don't control the part that the town or the municipalities control?
Right, you don't necessarily control the equalized values. Our numbers, we look at them based on a full value basis because that comes from equalization that are happening in all of your communities. So it gives us a broad look at all of your communities for the average taxpayer, what would that impact look like on a conservative basis for us? That's why we really focus on the full value impact for the projects.
Just some information for the community. Our tax base is not just the town of Lloyd. It includes the town of Plattekill, Esopis, and Marlborough, and New Pults. So there's multiple towns that lie within the Highland Central School District. So those tax rates will fluctuate from one community to the next. So it's not just Highland, town of Lloyd.
And we've been, we're very conservative in our estimates. We've used very conservative interest rates. And we've also, we've assumed zero growth in your tax base from 2022. We have made some assumptions that potentially minimize that impact. So there will be growth, so that impact comes on the conservative side with a higher number of $17 than no star.
And that basically was the presentation that we were putting out today. So we can now open it to if the board wants to have any clarifying questions or if the community would like to ask some clarifying questions. This would be the time to do so.
Chris, in regards to bands, I know when you initially set this up, you did a projection for what the interest was going to be. Now with the uptick in interest rates, where are we right now?
So in our analysis, we assume 4% for notes and 5% for bonds. Today, in today's market, you'd probably be 3.25 to 3.5 on a note and probably 3.5 to 4 on a bond. So we still have some wiggle in there. We have in our back pocket the ability to go and finance through the dorm authority in the state of New York. So if interest rates start to get away from us, we could, you know, pull the plug on issuing the bonds on our own through Wall Street. We can go through them through the dorm authority. And that's what effectively takes a little bit of risk out of rising interest rates by going and issuing the bonds through there. But we're still being conservative with the interest rates that we're using here. We've still got an expression built in.
All right. I'm not sure if this question is directed to Chris or potentially Lindsay. We've heard about that there is state aid that would be applied to Proposition 1. Is there any aid expected on Proposition 2, should it pass?
Yeah, so we take a look at, anytime we run a capital project scenario, we look at your maximum cost allowances. So for each of your student-occupied buildings, the state sets a rate of capacity for construction incidentals. And so we have to work within those aid ceilings. Proposition 1 on its own is about 93% eligible, and that's with us backing up the conservative 5% cushion on that too. So we're being very conservative on that aid estimate. Props 1 and 2 combined, 83% of the project is eligible for that 72% building unit ratio. So that's also factoring another 5% premium off of that as well.
That was 72% eligible, is that what I heard?
You were at 71.7% building unit ratio. So for, to get that 71.7%, we need to assume that what percentage of the project is eligible for that building unit?
Mm-hmm.
So for Prop 1, we assume 93%. For Prop 2, we assume 83%.
Thank you. I'm really interested in questioning and probing Prop 2 this evening simply because Prop 1 makes a lot of sense to folks that I know that I've spoken with, and it's not a tax impact. So, you know, and 2 can't pass without 1. So you're involved in many capital projects across the Hudson Valley. Is that accurate, an accurate statement? And would you say that turf fields are really becoming the standard amongst K-12 schools?
I think it would be a great question for your architect, but we do see a lot of turf fields in capital projects. So yes, I mean, we do see a lot of districts going out for turf field projects and that goes on as either within the proposition or as a second proposition. But it's not uncommon throughout the state to see that.
And is our architect presenting also tonight or is he here for questions?
Here for questions, if you have questions.
So would it be accurate to say that in high schools, turf fields are becoming the standard at this point in the Hudson Valley?
Yeah, I would say that it's becoming a standard because of so many people doing it across the position area and that it's becoming a competition thing. It's not only the school's trying to keep up the times, but it's a big benefit to the maintenance staff as well. So obviously with a grass field, you have to keep watering it, keep seeding it, keep maintaining it. But it's less of a burden if you go to turf and you don't worry about having to do that ongoing maintenance. It has a longer longevity than grass. So it's benefiting the district on behalf of the maintenance.
So aside from having, should option 2 pass then, aside from having a facility that's up to standard, there's man-hours that could be recaptured to put back into the organization? Is that what I'm hearing?
Right, yeah, so, yeah, so there's no need to melonize. There's need to apply pesticides. If that's one, then it's not only beneficial to the district, it's beneficial to the environment. So that time spent maintaining the facilities, we can houseware, can use houseware. We don't worry about losing all the water on the site because we're worried about watering the shirts when grass is ready for the next game. Additionally, with turf is the turnaround time between a rain event and a game is a lot quicker. You don't worry about ponding on the field. It drains off in a matter of minutes. So it's not, you're not worried about making sure that, oh, is the field ready for a game? You don't have to worry about that factor. So there's a lot of maintenance that's taken out of the equation when you're, when you don't need, when you're going with turf and it's not grass.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions for either our financial advisors or our design team? We'll open it up to the public. Please just come up to the mic if you'd like and state your name, and you can ask as many questions as you like. All right. I want to thank, again, like Joel said on the onset, he wanted to thank the board's support service, all the stakeholders, our administrative staff, everyone involved in putting this project together. I think it's going to be a benefit for the district and the students of the district and the community itself. Also, I think it was seven, seven and a half years ago, our community decided to move forward with a capital reserve. And we did that, the voters approved that. So in our last two projects, we've used that capital reserve as an offset to any capital project we've had, and it was basically tax-neutral. So we have, I think, two and a half more years, somewhere around there, left in this current one. I encourage the board to continue using that capital reserve. So we'll probably have to go back out to the voters at some point in time to reinstate that capital reserve. The last one, I believe, we did for 10 years. If there's any money excess in that account, it goes back to the taxpayers. So we try to utilize that to the best advantage we can. This year, with this project, I believe we're using 1.9 million, Lindsay? Close to 1.9 million. So it is a benefit. So I appreciate the community's support and what this Board of Education has done for the children of the Highland Central School District. Thank you.
I did have, I'm sorry, I did have one last question for CS Arch. Should the community not approve this option 2 and obtain this new standard in fields for Highland? And we have to wait, this rotation comes about, I think, every 10 years, just about? We have this opportunity? What do we expect with the costs? So right now, it's 4.1 million. In 10 years, would you expect that to increase? I see prices increasing dramatically of all kinds of materials, and I'm really concerned if we miss this opportunity. What are we going to, this standard is still going to be sought after in the future. What can we expect 10 years from now, should we not approve option 2?
So yeah, I would say it's kind of hard to predict how the market's going to change, but everything's kind of trending up and getting more and more inflation. But in 10 years from now, who knows what those factors, what those factors are going to have in the market? But I will say that right now, things that are typically plastic-based, for example, insulation, are going up, up and up. If a turf, if a turf is somewhat, if a turf field really is based on that controlling market, because again, we have chrome rubber that is part of the infill. We have the actual turf that is not, is artificial, of course. So right now, the, those materials are kind of high, but if they're going to keep going up, price controlling, those are going to go up. So plastics in general are kind of hard to predict. But going in the future, if we see gas prices typically gone up in the last 15 years, you can kind of equate that to any materials related to plastics or turf or chrome rubber, anything that's going up and we see that kind of pattern.
Thank you.
Dion, just to explain to whatever community members are out there listening or want to listen tomorrow or the next day, the longevity currently of a turf field is anywhere from 12 to 15 years. Am I accurate in saying that?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Most of the infrastructure to put that field in place is going to happen if Proposition 2 passes, correct?
Yes.
So when the longevity of that turf ends, and we have to replace the turf 12 to 15 years from now, the cost would only be to replace the carpet. Am I correct?
Correct. The carpet being like the actual top surface.
The actual top surface. So it is a benefit, you know, to the district that we're going to invest now, but then in the future, it's not a complete investment again. It's just to pull that, it's just like if you're doing carpeting in your house. You wear out the carpet, you rip it up, you put new carpet down. It's, and that's similar trait. So I think it's a benefit, and most of the infrastructure and the groundwork and the subbase and all that will be done now, currently, if Proposition 2 passes. And then after that, it's just upgrades to the surface itself. Thanks, Dion.
I would add that with the longevity thing, that because you're not worried about growing grass every year and making sure it's watered and seeded and fully grown, the replacement of carpet is so much quicker to replace. You don't have to worry about making sure that you have the right weather to do so. So yes, if the longevity is there and then the replacement cost and the time is so much quicker than the carpet.
Currently, rough numbers, ballpark figures. What's the replacement cost today? Looking at three-quarters of a million?
I would say anywhere 500,000, 600,000, 700,000, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if we don't have any other questions, I just want to wrap up by reminding the community to please come out and let us know what you think of our project on Tuesday, October 18th, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., just down the hall here in Highland High, excuse me, Highland High School in the band room. There are plenty of flyers available over on the side table if anyone would like to take one or take a few and share them with their friends. The video is on the website. All of this information is also on the website, on the capital improvement page. And also check out our Facebook page as information is put up there on a regular basis. And if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to myself or any of the board members, any administrator. They pretty much know the project now inside and out. And there's also a dedicated email address, capitalproject@highland-k12.org, that we will get back to your questions as soon as we possibly can. And just a reminder that if you are not able to vote on October 18th, you can apply for an absentee ballot. The rules are still in effect from the spring. So if you are not comfortable going into the gym or into the band room and would like to tick off for medical reasons, you're able to do so. At all of the events that I have coming up in the near future, I will have applications for those absentee ballots, but you could also get in contact with the district office or Lisa Cerniglia, and her email is L.Cerniglia, C-E-R-N-I-G. or Lisa Cerniglia and her email is L Cerniglia, C E R N I G L I A at Highland-k12.org and we will make sure that we take care of you and get you that absentee ballot. Most importantly, we just hope that the entire community comes out and votes on October 18th. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes our public hearing on our capital improvement project. I thank everyone for coming out to listen. I appreciate our design team, our financial advisors for coming out. Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right, so now we're going to have Harriet's presentation. Just got to get that up on the screen.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order for our open meeting. At this time, we're going to have several special presentations. Joel is getting the screen ready and first up will be Harriet Meyer is going to give us a update on the Diversity, Inclusion and Racial Equity Committee.
Each one of these touchscreens is slightly different, so it's not the one that I've been using at all of the events.
Hi, so first I would like to start by just thanking you all for allowing me to speak on behalf of this work tonight and also for allowing me to focus on this work as part of my job as an educator here in Highland. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Harriet Meyer. I teach English here in the high school and as of last year, I've also acted as the district's diversity, equity and inclusion liaison. So what that functionally means is that I have the privilege really of facilitating the work of the Diversity, Inclusion and Racial Equity Committee. And working with this committee has been so inspiring for me in that public education is truly about collaboration between community, the school and service of students. And this committee really is about that in that we have representation from parents, from students, from teachers, from administrators and from instructional staff on the committee. And my role is essentially to listen and criticize the perspectives of those various stakeholders and to help do some of the labor to coordinate turning those perspectives into our community. So our mission statement, as we crafted it in the first year of the committee, is to identify and disrupt systemic barriers, to eliminate disparities based on student and family characteristics, and to create a safe school climate where all students feel safe and can thrive. And this idea of safety is crucially important in education because without a sense of safety, students can't take the risks that are necessary in order to learn, intellectual risks that are necessary in order to learn, whether that's second grader reading out loud in front of the class or an 11th grader posing an argument in a discussion and they're not sure how it's going to be received. Risk is part of education and so creating a psychologically safe environment is necessary in order for education to take place. And in Highland, we really pride ourselves on being a technic community where students feel seen, valued, appreciated, teachers know their names even if they don't have them in class, school adults are familiar with all the students in the building. On this committee, we've had to grapple with the fact that not all students feel that same sense of belonging and we need to leverage that more than community that we have here to create a stronger sense of belonging for all students. And in terms of how that happens, how to create a sense of belonging for all students, part of that is in curriculum and in school life, creating mirror and window opportunities for our students. So mirrors in which they see their own identities valued and reflected in a school environment and windows through which they can see experiences that are different from theirs and learn to empathize with them. And when we do this, we truly create an environment in which difference is not only tolerated, but celebrated. So this somewhat dizzy graphic, which you also have a copy of in front of you, sort of tells the story of this committee, how it's evolved over the last, now it's third year. From the summer of 2020, we bring together various stakeholder groups to form this committee, the establishment of priorities, climate and culture toward field and professional development and staff diversity, and initiatives that have kind of trickled out of this committee, especially the subcommittees that have kind of having been the working groups of these initiatives. And most of these committees consisted of some parents, some students, some community members and some district employees, and that was how these initiatives have sort of made their way into the building. So I'll come back to this in a little bit more detail. But just to sort of summarize, in our first year, it was truly about evaluating the situation as it stood, right? Sort of figuring out the landscape of the district and how, where we can sort of take in these initiatives to better create that sense of belonging for all students. We established the four subcommittees to focus on these priorities and then last year, we're able to really think about how we might start to implement some of these ideas. We also, in terms of the committee last year, increased student representation. So we went from having two students on the committee to having four students on the committee. We began rolling out some of these initiatives through administrators, through work in the building, through professional development, through curriculum review. And we also were able to build our own knowledge around culturally responsive sustaining education. Many members of our committee, including board members, including teachers, students, administrators and parents, engaged in professional development also closely to really build knowledge around these issues. So I'm going to break down just a couple of the things that have come out in the past couple of years. This is not everything, but just to sort of give some examples of how this work has started to take place. So the curriculum subcommittee, in the first year of the committee, created a culturally responsive sustaining education-based curriculum review framework for faculty to use, essentially a tool that teachers could use to reflect on their own curriculum and decide how they could make it more culturally responsive to better reach all students. And that was sort of beta tested by a group of teachers that elected to do that as part of summer work in the summer of 2021. And then those teachers were involved in tweaking the framework to make it more useful, more effective, more succinct before it was rolled out more broadly as a tool for faculty The staff diversity committee, whose aim is to help our, as we continue hiring new faculty to staff, to help our teaching staff, the adults in the building, start to reflect more our student bodies. And they went through interview questions, they sort of audited our interview process, they worked to list openings on NemNet which recruits a more diverse pool of applicants. And last year began surveying teachers within the building to determine what it is that makes Highland such a wonderful place to work and to use that to develop promotional materials to again, increase and diversify the applicant pool when we have a new job opening. The climate and culture committee began by collaborating with PBIS to look at culture in schools and how they could better create welcoming and affirmative engagement. They reviewed and discussed the current code of conduct through an equity lens, prioritized reporting incidents, and last year analyzed disaggregated disciplinary data. So looking at suspensions, looking at in-school suspension, looking at any disciplinary action that had taken place, I believe they went back about five years, to determine if there was disparity, to determine if certain student identity groups were getting these consequences in a way that would have proportionate percentage of the population. And happily, they discovered that there was not disproportionality in that data, except for more male students than female students were getting these consequences and ending up these disciplinary situations, which is good information. Finally, the professional development committee, in collaboration with the district administration, researched existing professional development options and tried to identify what gaps needed to be addressed, surveyed faculty to determine what they were most interested in or what they felt they needed in terms of professional development, and last year collaborated with the district administration to launch district-wide professional development and culturally responsive sustaining education, and Dawson informs LGBTP plus literacy and advised in their intervention. And again, surveyed the faculty to get feedback on what was next, what worked well, what did not work well. So those are some of the initiatives that have already sort of been phased through this work as it stands right now. In terms of our current priorities, things that we see as a whole moving forward, certainly continuing with professional development, continuing to work with PBIS to foster a welcoming and inclusive environment, which is really rare as work starts, creating more opportunities for student voice and voice in their education is a huge, a huge priority on the committee. And as we start to determine our priorities, being more effective at communicating about faculty initiatives, both to students, parents and the community, and also approaching concerns collaboratively. So when there are concerns over curriculum, when there are concerns but not being reflected of student pride and envy, being able to use that as a learning opportunity for everyone involved. So the big question at this point in the sort of maturity of the committee and of these initiatives is how do we take what began as a truly collaborative effort and make it into a sustainable system? How do we make this just part of how we do things and have it in some of those districts and not something that is a passing, a passing solution? So part of that is going to require that the, that the committee collaborates with the district to really create district-level equity policy. So having a policy that covers hiring, teaching and learning, student support, discipline and wellness, development, community engagement, that is in line with a vision that is shared by the district and by all stakeholders who are in the future of the district, for equity lens. And again, this needs to be collaborative, collaborating with stakeholders to develop measurable goals to ensure that this has longevity and is effective in the long term. Another goal for this school year is to clarify and follow the role and the function of the committee in the district. So as you saw, as you can see on the initial photograph, it's quite, it's quite organic. So perhaps creating a system that might be a more sustainable way for this committee to function within the district. So the way this could work is for the committee to really become more of a sounding board for the board and for the district administration. So when a question comes before the board or when a question is being worked on by district administration, they might bring that to the director committee for consideration and so that our committee could provide feedback. So because this committee doesn't reach so many stakeholder groups, it is an asset that can be tapped into to ensure that policy is informed by these priorities. And the district, the building level committees, which actually were formed last year and really began to take shape, would become more the engine of these initiatives, right? So the building level committees, the elementary school, middle school and high school committees would be developing solutions, developing initiatives, implementing programs, obviously in collaboration with building industry level administration, and all of these committees would have representation on the overall district committee. So the last thought that I will close out with for this evening comes from the New York State Education Department's culturally responsive sustaining education framework. And the quote is that the results we seek for all our children can never be fully achieved without incorporating an equity and inclusion lens in every part of the hardware. In other words, it is not simply about doing these things because we think it's the right thing to do. It is necessary in order for all students to achieve success in the way that we know that they can. So that's all I have. If you have questions, I can try and speak to them.
Harriet, my one question, I believe it was three years ago, we had concerned students, alumni come forward, we read, I don't know how many testimonials. Have you seen since then a real drastic improvement in diversity, inclusion and equity within our district? I know there's always room for improvement, but have you seen a major movement on our part as far as addressing their concerns that we heard three years ago?
Anecdotally, I would say yes. Certainly we heard from some of the students on the committee that they were feeling a shift in terms of their voices being heard more in the district, being heard more in the classroom. I feel like that teachers were more willing to incorporate their opinions and their identities into the work of the classroom. I think that, you know, to really answer that question, it would require, you know, looking at how our panorama of data has evolved since then, but I think, I think there's, I'm optimistic based on what I hear anecdotally.
Thank you.
Harriet, I just wanted to ask, well, first of all, I think it's wonderful, the work that the committee's doing and has done thus far. From what you were speaking just now, and this is purely from an intellectual standpoint, you mentioned the analyzed disaggregated data and your one finding in that being throughout, which was on one level very pleasurable to hear, but on the other, it concerns me that you did have a finding and it was just passed off. It wasn't considered actionable.
Oh, I think it is considered actionable. That was certainly something that was, all right, now we just have a conversation about this.
Has, and what would the process for that be? Have we established one?
So you mean in terms of what?
Right, according to your disaggregated data analyz- analyzation, you determined that there was a disproportionate amount of young men that were being disciplined within the district. To me, anytime we have a, you know, to achieve full equity, any factor should be looked at and, and analyzed under that lens. So my question is, are we looking at why that is?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I mean, I think that that question is a question for, that was certainly a question that we then discussed quite a bit in terms of what is it that is creating this pattern, right? And that's a question for, I know we spent some time discussing it on our high school building level committee in terms of what is it that makes young men more or less attached to academic success, is a pattern that we see as well, as opposed to young men. And just, I mean, I don't think there's an easy answer to it, but that is something that, that's what culturally responsive education is about.
But even that seems an assumption to say that they're not attached to academic success. It may not have a value among other things, but I guess what I'm wondering is, this to me stands out as a factor that should be, in fact, it's a great test factor to find out how we're going to make these things actionable as we find them.
Right.
You know, beyond the simple discussion.
So I definitely, I agree that it is, I think it's actionable and I think that that's truly what culturally responsive education is about, is when you see a pattern, you know, the student is not, and the fact that, that our young men more or less invested in academic success was an observation that came up in this, in this conversation on the building level committee. And so the question, if you're thinking from a culturally responsive perspective, is how can we help that population to see themselves reflected more, to see their identities reflected more and validated in the curriculum such that they do feel more and validated in the curriculum such that they do feel that they have a statement?
Evening, Harriet. First, I'd like to thank you for your dedication and all the time you put in, both to the work, the conversation. I'm sure there's many moments that aren't captured, whether it's in the classroom or talking with staff, so I appreciate your commitment to the work. I'm looking at the center of this diagram, because I'm a data guy, so I like when you collect data, do something, and then down the road, you want to collect that data again and see if there's growth or what the picture says. So I'm interested, the re-administered panorama survey to parents, students, and staff, did that take place already, or is that something in the future? I know we did it once.
Bill's working on that right now.
Okay.
For it to be administered this fall.
Excellent. That was going to be the question, because like you said, that was three years ago that we had a very open dialogue with our community, and I was interested to see when that would be administered. I think that'll be some real qualitative data. I know PD, professional development, and staff training is always like a big part of any initiative in a school, but I'm really interested in how this process, or any of the building processes, how we've amplified student voice around this issue. Can you just talk to me a little bit about that?
Sure, sure. So certainly, a lot of the professional development that we have done around this work has been developed in-house, and whenever possible, it has been anchored in specific observations for students, things that work for young students. So the professional development that was administered last year, part of it was LGBT+ literacy informed by DASSA presentation, and that was actually created by some students who had been active members of our Gender and Sexuality Alliance here, and then they worked together with a school psychologist to make up presentation, not applicable to educators, and actually, we had a former student who helped to administer it, to administer the professional development. So really trying to emphasize to educators who are experiencing that, that this wasn't the arrival, right, that there were students who had been impacted by those experiences.
That is so powerful. Thank you. I mean, if that's the type of activity that is a result of the committee's work and the dialogue that we've had, that's fantastic. I wouldn't have gleaned that from any one presentation, and I appreciate that because it makes me, not that I frown upon PD, but I just, the fact that that was connected to student experience is very valuable. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you, Harriet.
I would just like to add that Harriet did make a presentation similar to this at SUNY New Paltz over the summer at the Leadership Conference for School Administrators across the region. So Harriet, thank you for representing Highland at that conference, and we were, many of us were at that.
Yes.
And it was pretty wonderful.
Okay, our next special presentation's going to be our overnight field trips from
Good evening, everyone. So as you're aware, the high school takes several field trips, and two of our biggest field trips take place out of state, one out of the country, one is to Canada, and one is down to Florida to Disney for the seniors. So here this evening, we have Ms. Otis and Mr. Scrow, who actually, Mr. Scrow is on both trips, but Ms. Otis leads the charge with the Canada trip. So they'll explain to you some more of the finer details of the two trips.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Lisa Otis, and I teach Spanish at the high school. Many of you've had children on these trips, and I have to say that you know that Lionel Heath led the charge for the Canada trip for probably 20 years. I have some big shoes to fill, but I was on many of those trips, so I'm not afraid. So the plan is to travel to Montreal, Canada, December 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, and we'd be leaving Friday morning and returning Sunday evening. Fifty students, five chaperones that are listed in your minutes, and one tour guide that we pick up when we get to Canada, and who's with us for the whole time. We travel by a chartered bus that's arranged by Jump Street. Jump Street is the tour company that we work with, and the bus is checked out by our department, our bus department, transportation department, before we leave that morning. We encourage cultural awareness, travel, trying new experiences, new foods, practicing language skills on the trip, and we're really looking forward to having this back. As of October 1st, Canada is lifting their COVID requirements, so breathing a little sigh of relief there, that's a little less paperwork. And I really appreciate your support for all these years for this trip.
Just to recap, the number of students going in, cost?
Fifty students. The cost of the trip is $496.
I'm hearing this even from, you know, the middle school level with the possible Boston trip, that the bus transportation is the biggest deterrent to some of these trips, the cost of transportation. Is that accurate with your trip going to Canada?
I have a full trip. I have four people on the waiting list. The feedback I've been getting from parents who have emailed me with questions, they're so excited that their kids have had, have an opportunity to do something because they haven't had anything from COVID. I mean, yeah, there have been, you know, a little, the increase. We tried, we tried, we were first going to go to Montreal and Quebec, and instead of going to Quebec, we decided to just stay in Montreal to cut down on that cost, but in doing that, then the hotel was a little bit more expensive.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Anyone else have questions regarding the Canada trip?
I just want to think, I think it's wonderful we're getting back to that. I think one of the big detriments they're finding about the last couple of years with COVID wasn't, was not only the educational aspect, but the experiential, and there's a lot of growth development from a psychological standpoint that the students have, they've been stunted in, and basically life experiences that they would normally have two years' worth of life experiences and encounters, and so amplifying those through excursions like this, I think is a wonderful thing.
I agree. Thank you. Is there any other questions? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Scrow. I teach chemistry, and I'm also the senior class advisor. Since about 2004, and for the 10 years that I've been advisor, we've run the trip to Florida as the senior trip. Typically, we have about anywhere between 40 and 55 students. We don't have an exact number yet because we have to take initial deposits. It will run the weekend of March 25th and 26th. It can range from the Thursday to the Sunday, or it can range from the Friday to the Monday. We fluctuate it based on ticket prices that we get for airfare. It's typically four days in the park. It's open to all seniors. A cost of the ticket is tentatively, we try to keep it around $1,200. Again, as you brought up, airfare tends to be the biggest deterrent. Last year, airfare was half the price of the ticket. That's pretty much it from my end. I'd open up to any questions.
I want to thank you both for making these opportunities available. It's so important because we certainly hear from our former graduates who graduated during the COVID restrictions, and there's no way to make up for the deficit that they carry, unfortunately. But it did let, communicate quite clearly that the classroom's not just limited to the school building, and that school trips in all their forms, especially these, are extremely important to the learning experience of students. I'll say that students who don't participate in these, I know our mind goes directly to costs, or maybe they can't afford it, but there are many other reasons why students choose not to go on these trips, whether they're working or committed elsewhere, or a family trip. But I do believe that within the school, if there is assistance needed, if one wants to go, there is assistance that can be sought out to close any of these financial gaps. So I just wanted to voice that for our viewers out there, and parents out there, students out there who, you know, still want to participate but have a financial challenge, please speak to the advisors, speak to your building principals, so we can assist. Thank you.
That was one of my questions I was going to bring up, Mike. I know in the past, I believe, you know, scholarships are given out for those that cannot truly afford the total cost, but I guess this question might be to Lindsay, that being these, and piggyback what Mike just said, being that these trips are educational, it's a big learning experience for all our students, is there any restrictions on the district helping to offset the costs of some of these trips that are on the educational piece of it?
I can, I can look into that for you.
I appreciate that, mainly because, you know, what I've heard earlier, and maybe Andy can attest to that, that, you know, that the Boston trip that is in the infancy stage of trying to, you know, get off the ground, and that's a, pretty much a full class of eighth graders that go, the big expense now is the transportation. Bus, bus transportation now, I've heard, has doubled or tripled than it was several years ago, and that's unfortunate, and the burden is placed on the student, and some parents, you know, cannot afford to pay that full boat. So I'm just curious if the district can financially help some of our educational trips to get more of those involved in attending those trips.
They can also look into fundraising as well for that, but will, and I'll look into, but I will also look into other options as well.
Absolutely, but there are, I mean, you can fundraise to no end and still run short of the dollars, so is there a way that, of course, we're not going to just foot the bill totally, but I think with sincere fundraising activities and offset by, you know, the parents' participation, and we still fall a little short, I think there should be a line that we can draw this as, you know, enough is enough, let's see if the district can offset some of those expenses.
Al, I like where you're going, because if they're tied to curriculum, and the transportation appears to be the biggest barrier, I would love to look into removing that particular barrier, and then let the chips fall where they may. You're not going to get 100% participation, but if it's curricular, can we tie it, right? Nobody buys their own textbooks, we supply those. So kind of along that same concept, that if there's a curricular trip, and there is a barrier there, and that we can help remove it, I'd be interested in talking more about that.
Anybody else?
Just some, some concerns that both Mike and Al expressed about, just financial assistance, but just thinking with the senior trip, my son did it last year and had a, you know, probably one of his best experiences that he will talk about, but noticing that the number of students that participate is not necessarily half of the senior class, I was just wondering, have you done a survey to figure out why is that more students aren't involved?
We haven't done a survey, but anecdotally, what I hear typically is, cost is a barrier to some. Some also depends on athletics, because we run it in March, the sport seasons tend to run at the same time, and there's conflicting with different invitationals or practices. They know that in advance, and they tend not to do it, and then often, there's a friendship factor, so because they share a room with three other people, if they don't feel comfortable with the people that are going, their friend group, some of them won't go based on that.
Overall, I just wanted to say thank you guys, to you guys for coming out tonight, but also to the chaperones who have committed to going on the trips. I know it's a lot of time away from family, so thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? You see it on our agenda as the next item, but it'll be placed in with the consent agenda, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our.
Lisa, just one correction on the Disney trip, did you catch it? It's the 25th to the 26th, so.
Okay.
It's two days, 25th to 26th? Oh, I got you. Oh, I see, I see. That's, yep, okay.
Okay, moving forward on the consent items, we're going to take those items from A1 to D1, and include the Canada trip and the Disney senior trip at the end of D1. So those two trips will be included in our consent agenda. Again, if anyone has any items they want to pull out, we can do that and address them separately. If you don't have any, I'll entertain a motion to move on our consent agenda. Motion by Tom, seconded by Janine. Any discussion?
It's A1 through D2A, right?
Well, it's part of, 2A is part of... Yeah, it would be 2A, correct. But that's all under one resolution, so technically is, is D1. There's not a separate resolution for 2A. Any, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 7-0. Okay, under curriculum and instruction, our principal's monthly report. We have one for the elementary school.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You can stand there.
Hey, Stan.
I'm back.
Is it on?
Yes, it is. Hi, everyone. Mrs. Samuel, the assistant principal at the elementary school, I'm happy to be here. The students are transitioning nicely into the school. We had some hiccups in kindergarten, but that is ironing out. We had Jared Campbell come to visit, he sung songs, he played his guitar, and everyone's eyes were sparkling with joy, so I don't know what else to add in addition to the report that we sent before this meeting, but we are happy to have Ian join us on Friday, our new principal. So if you have any questions, I can try my best to answer them.
Singing songs and eyes sparkling with joy, that's...
Right? That's all you need.
Actually, my kids came home, and one of them said, "Wasn't that great today?", and the other two said, "My gosh, that was so much fun!"
It really was, and he was so funny.
So they fed off of each other on that one.
Aw, I'm glad to hear it.
All right, no questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give our new library media specialist a shout out. She had her first book fair last week at the middle school, and sharing buildings between, sharing her between the high school and here, and putting a, putting a book fair together after just being hired not that long ago is a huge accomplishment, and she did a great job, and we had the highest sales we've ever had, so a huge shout out to her and her advertising and everything she did for that. And then, two other things. One thing I wanted to provide, a math assignment that Ms. Valentino is doing with her seventh grade math students to honor Hispanic Heritage Month, and there are answers there, sorry, Mr. Batatzius, but I wanted everyone to see, when you look at it, the backside is actually the work, and then you, the, this actually goes on to here. So these are the, she, you had to solve the math problem to learn facts about Hispanic Heritage Month, so it was really cool how she incorporated both, so I just wanted you guys to see that. The little numbers underneath are the answers, so it's kind of hard to see if you hold it back. And then the last thing I wanted to give you guys is, next week, our PTA has their first fundraiser, and we are doing a mixed bag fundraiser with Boone Supply. first fundraiser, and we are doing a mixed bag fundraiser with Boone Supply. And we encourage everyone to purchase some bags for the holidays. They will be in before Thanksgiving, and they're all eco-friendly bags and items that you can purchase. So there's a QR code, everything is done online. So I'm going to give these out, just in case you guys are interested, and our students will get these next week. So you can't actually log on to the website until Monday, but I just wanted to encourage everyone for that as well. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Megan, I got to apologize, because I didn't really didn't see you, because Mark Reynolds is sitting there, and I had mentioned Andrew's name before, but I apologize.
Oh, no worries. I'm loud, you'll see me eventually. Thank you.
You got to move next time, Mark.
I have a quick question for our business administrator, or our superintendent, whoever may know the answer. With the fundraisers, is there any inhibition for people, or something that would preclude people from donating directly without purchasing something?
Excellent. Next week as well, actually. So the PTA, the middle school, does something called a unfundraiser. So we've seen this in other places and other districts, where basically, if you wanted to donate, just to the PTA, we try to make like a bit of a joke about it. Like, if you don't want to have to pretend to sell baked goods, or, you know, get the flyer home, you can just donate if you'd like to. So there are ways that you want to donate directly to check or in fact, whatever it has to be paid to the PTA, so you can go directly to that.
All right, it's a very personal thing, because I had, my nephew was just recently doing one where he was selling popcorn at an outrageous amount. Forty-five dollars later, we got two little bags of popcorn, and they got $20. I would have rather have given the $45 right to them.
We would love just your check.
Yeah, that's right.
And that would be HMS PTA?
Yes, right there, HMS PTA.
Excellent, okay.
So we will, I'll bring that flyer next time, I just didn't want to inundate you in the first meeting, but, so that flyer will be going out as a K12 alert to our parents that says, if you'd like to just donate directly to the PTA, we will absolutely take that over doing fundraising as well.
Excellent.
When you send that K-12 alert out, you could also, the board members are listed as a, their own category, you could send it to them right, right there electronically, and you save paper.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
Good advertising.
Al, thanks, Joel.
Send them all to Alan Barone.
And you heard it, Mr. Mizell's going to buy at least $45 for popcorn.
All right, I will.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick updates to my monthly report. Last spring, we had one of our former board members, Sue Gilmore, work with a local resident artist, Lady Pink, with two of our high school art teachers, Les Castellanos and Erica Babino, to create an outstanding mural that I have a picture of, I'm going to pass around for everyone. A lot of time was spent on that. There was a lot of student, it was student-run, and just overseen by Lady Pink and the art teachers. I think you'll 100% agree that the finished product is outstanding. It's on Vineyard Avenue, under the overpass, down on the hamlet. I drove by it yesterday afternoon, and it's...
Still there.
Still there, which is a good thing.
Good shape.
So yes, it's still there, that's a good thing. So I just wanted to give recognition to those who created the mural. The finished product is absolutely outstanding, so I wanted to make sure they received recognition for that. Another addition quickly that I have, something that I created new this year, is just a quarterly principal's report that was sent out to the community. So this is mailed out the last week of August in preparation of the start of the new school year. I'll send around a copy for you as well. As I said, it's quarterly, so mine's will be going out after November 1st. That has updated information as to what's going on within that quarter. It does have a calendar along the side of important events that are coming up throughout that time period. Additionally, on September 16th, very unexpectedly, Mr. Kirsch and I were getting ready to leave at around maybe quarter after 5:00, when all of a sudden, a mass of bodies just started showing up at the front door of the high school. We had no idea who they were. It was a class of 1972. They appeared and just wanted to take a tour of the building. So we spoke with them for a while, and Mr. Kirsch did take them on a tour of the building so they can see what's changed since 1972. Quite a few things, and I think Coach Alfonso, they were the Highlanders at the time, correct? So they were kind of questioning me as to why we're now called the Highland Huskies. So we were talking for a bit about that, and they were very grateful for the opportunity to be able to take a tour of the building, and reminisce a little bit, and tell us about where all the spots were that they shouldn't be doing, things that they were doing at the time. So they, they had a lot of fun, so it was, it was, it was a good time. And lastly, the last addition that I have, is something that I've been asked over the last couple of years, again, this is a pandemic-related item that we were not able to do, which was the Lunch and Learn. And it was something that I believe a former administrator had put in place, and I wanted to recoin the term this year and bring it back, because I've received a lot of inquiries as to whether or not we're going to bring it back. So we have updated the name, I think we're going to be looking at calling it a taste of success. We do have local businesses and organizations that will be coming in monthly to follow the same presentation format that they did for the Lunch and Learn. We're going to be starting that, the first one, about mid-October. We look forward to resurrecting practice that was done here in the past.
Okay.
Any questions at all?
Not a question, as much as a comment. I was here with the high school open house, it was very, very well attended. I was really impressed with the number of parents here, and it was a well-organized evening, and ran very smoothly, and I want to thank you for that, and your efforts. It's been a very smooth opening, and we knew that the transition of the high school leadership team would be smooth, and that's what we're experiencing here at the end of September. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Ken. Anyone have any questions for our directors? We have two or three of our directors here, four of our directors, I believe, here this evening. So if you have any questions for the directors...
Question for...
Sorry, question for our technology director. How are you? So student devices are all in the hands of students throughout the district at this time?
Yes.
I just wanted to know, how do we handle when one of those is malfunctioning? What's your, what's the repair situation there?
Sure. So with the help of our very talented library media specialists, right, we have extra Chromebooks and other devices on hand, so the fastest way to get them into the student's hands is just to go to the library and get them swapped out. Alternatively, we also have our help desk ticketing system, which, if that comes directly to us, we can get devices into students' hands if they have an issue with it.
Right, so your library media person repairs the Chromebooks? What's that process like?
Not repairing. So basically, we have extras standing by so that we can just swap them out with the student if there's an issue, and then we collect them back and troubleshoot and fix whatever needs to happen.
So those unrepaired Chromebooks eventually do get repaired and go back into the fleet?
The unrepaired?
Yeah.
No, if, well, if, yeah, if they're unrepaired, meaning there was nothing wrong with them to begin with?
Let's say I, I have a Chromebook issued to me, and I drop it, and the screen cracks.
Right.
Run us through what, how is, how does a student get that replaced, repaired, or...
Right, so as soon as a student lets us know that they have an issue where they can't get online, the device is broken, or any other issue, the easiest thing for us to do is just swap it out, and then we can start to troubleshoot, determine whether it's fixable, or if we just retire that device.
And if it's fixable, how does that move forward?
So we tend to do that right here in-house. If we have to order replacement parts or anything like that, then, you know, our, the folks in my office take care of that.
Okay. Okay. I just, other schools that have one-to-one device initiatives, there's usually some costs, whether it's a repair plan or insurance plan. We don't have that here, and I was just curious on how that all works.
It depends on the age of the device, you know, the warranty that comes with the device, that if it's, if it's new enough, then we can usually get that replaced, and it's not a problem there. So far, what I'm seeing is that we don't have so many devices being damaged that it's become an issue yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On that same note, Mike, do we have a policy in regards to our devices going out to students, because they are taking them home, and there is the risk of damage beyond an ordinary malfunction of the device? It could be, you know, dropped and run over by a car in the driveway?
I mean, middle school, my experience, middle school is really a meat grinder for devices, if they're in fact really traveling back and forth from the home to class. So I don't know, you know, it might be interesting to maybe talk about a little further at some point in a later date. Are students required to have them in class? You know, when you're a one-to-one school, that's because each class that the students are going to go to have some touchpoints that require a device. And really, the bringing of that device back and forth to class, and home, and all that transition is the skill that they need practice on. So I, you know, I'm not as familiar how it works here. I know, you know, my sons have devices, they use them, whether that's the school device or their own, I really don't know, but they're using devices. I just don't know if classroom work requires the device, or is it just some teachers, or sporadic? I'm not sure, but, I mean, those are things we can probe, I guess, and learn throughout the year.
I think at some point, if, like, like you said, if it gets to become a real issue where there's a lot of damaged devices, then I think then we have to address it beyond the normal malfunction of a device.
Right. More often, it's an issue of a student didn't charge it, or brings it in, you know, they need to plug it in for a while, or they forgot theirs at home, and then those are the issues we're running into more often. But as far as how much are being utilized in the individual classroom, that's really, I guess it's more of a question for the individual buildings.
Okay.
This is just a housekeeping issue. I'm assuming part of it may fall to you, part may fall to Mr. Miller. We still use SchoolDudes? Or you do for repairs and stuff? And I know the tech department uses a ticket service?
That's right.
Tech requests tickets. I know it's early in the year, but how are those, I know in the past, we've had buildups that were unmanageable. How are those, the flow going all right?
I mean, at the start of any year, you're going to have a big rush. When I checked earlier today, we were at about 205 for September, so it's quite a few. But, you know, we're working through those, and the new ticketing system, it's very easy for the teachers, or students' parents, anyone who needs to use it. And so I think the ease of using that, we're finding out what the issues are, we're able to get to them pretty quickly, and so it's helping us to also plan ahead to avoid, you know, that kind of buildup of issues.
Now, in both systems, is there a way to determine how long it's been in the chute? And I only ask this from, and it's not an accusatory thing, it's strictly from a data point, like Mike was saying, if we know the data, we know where we may have to address issues?
Yes.
And so is there a counter to say, like, this request has been in the chute for so long? And I know supplies and materials can inhibit what things can be done, but I'm just curious if we're keeping track of that as well.
Yes, yep. There's timers, there's a lot of functions built into it that helps us for tracking, but also keeps the end user informed of where we are in the process.
That's good.
Okay, I mean, I started thinking, like, even, let's say that we had 300 broken devices, laptops, Chromebooks, and stuff like that. I don't know how we dispose of that, those items here. They've never, usually, there's a surplus list that gets approved by the board, because we're going to access that equipment, and I believe IT equipment falls in that category, but we, I don't think we've ever seen...
Not IT.
A surplus list of IT equipment, and where that goes. How do, and you're new to the district, so we'll take that into account.
I've brought this up at other meetings.
Have we gotten rid of this stuff, Ed?
It just became a line item that would, our former director would just say, authorization to dispose of, and we never heard anything. And I question that, you know, whether we, there should be ways of outsourcing that to maker programs, or families that might want to, you know, deal with the equipment, rather than, I would like to see it accounted for.
Like the buses. Why don't we not treat it like the buses?
That's my old one.
Just a question.
Our buildings person would say, because we don't have the space. But I think it is something I would love to see us look forward to, the, utilizing these things, that, things that are no longer in service, utilizing them for either educational purposes, or for the advantage of families in the district.
You know, I think we started this discussion last year, and we'll probably get into it a little more this year. How are these, what's the expectation in the building of these devices? I know Camille and I have talked about this a little bit, that's, you know, there's just...
In terms of how many years?
A lack of clarity. You know, I understand having a device in the COVID process, because we're learning off-campus, but we're still a one-to-one school.
Right.
We have a device per child, and what's our, how are they using them in the classroom? I think, you know, that's kind of where we left off last year, and then there was a transition in the position, but, you know, I think it behooves us to talk a little bit more about what are, what are our buildings expecting of these devices, and, you know, how do these 21st century skills that, that back all that up, you know, how are they, how does that transcend the school system? Anyway, a lot of talking, no questions, thank you.
All right, thank you.
So I just have some, I'm just adding on to what Mike, Mike said about the expectations. Would it be possible to kind of get overview of how it's being used in elementary, middle school, high school? Because that's something that, whether they go to college, or they go into workforce, they have to be able to use the computer. So that's just something that I think would be helpful for just the community to see. And I look, I asked my son what he does with it, but I know that's not the case for every classroom, so just maybe that may be helpful for the board.
I can address that. So we're going to include that in this month's report, but we're so early, and some of the data's not completely, it's not very, doesn't get the complete picture yet, but some of the programs that we have really tracks how students are using individual applications, programs. So we monitor how it's being used at each grade level, and so we can include that in next month's report, for sure.
And then speaking of the report as well, would it be helpful, just thinking about Mike's question about loss and damage, just to maybe keep us up to date as to how many computers are damaged, whether they're replaceable, so cracked screens, missing keys, I mean, I can give you a whole list of them, but maybe just to kind of, for that data to see if, you know, if something that we should as a, as a, you know, a district maybe address, create a policy to discuss the loss. And then GoGuardian, if I read your report correctly, we're just using it for internet filtering? Teachers are not using it to monitor what kids are doing on devices right now?
So as of right now, so GoGuardian was the new product that we, that was purchased in the previous year, and it was, we're starting to roll that out this past summer. And so it's a pretty robust program, there's a lot of different features that we have access to, and anytime we have a new program, there's a lot of work that has to happen on the backend, but then also kind of getting ready to roll that out into the, into the schools, and so that the teachers, the students, everyone kind of knows what to expect. And so, yes, there's some, there's some additional functionality, some teacher tools that we have access to, that once we kind of got the dust settled from September, we start to move forward, we'll be able to roll those out as well.
When do you anticipate being able to use the teacher piece of it work? Because it's very helpful for a teacher to be able to see what the kids are doing.
Right.
And you can lock them out of different features, so I'm just curious as to when you see, be able, you know, that process, getting that rolled out to the teachers.
I don't have a specific date, but the goal is definitely to get that out as soon as possible. You know, the rest of GoGuardian is still relatively new to us, so we want to make sure that we fully understand the capabilities, and then we can kind of prepare some, how that plan is going to get rolled out, and what some of the resources are. You know, we don't want to drop a new, a new set of tools on the teachers, you know, there's a lot of different programs and applications you're using, it can be very overwhelming. So we want to make sure that we have some of the training planned out before we just throw it out there, because, you know, not knowing how to use it, sometimes it can be, it feels like just another thing being put on their plate, and so I want to make sure that we've really given that a lot, a lot of thought, so that they're prepared to use it effectively.
And my last question, just related to, you know, just digital citizenship, social media safety.
Yep.
So any, any plans as far as how we're getting out, we have more devices, you know, kids have more access to devices, you know, since 12, at home now, and even during the school days, just, so any, you know, thoughts on, or any plans on providing those trainings for the students?
Right, absolutely. I mean, that's, it's a, it's a requirement, we need to provide that, you know, the, a certain level of education on digital citizenship, and appropriate use of the internet, and the tools that we're providing our students. And so I'm going to meet with the various building levels to make sure, to see, you know, how we can do that without taking away from, we want to make sure we, it's compatible with what's happening in the buildings from an academic standpoint. So there's more conversation to be had around, around that specifically.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think on that same vein, I know I brought this up quite a few years ago in regards to cellphone devices. Back then, we didn't have one device per child. Now we have one device per child. And I know when we were talking about trying to minimize the use of cellphones quite a few years ago, teachers came forward and say, well, we use them for classroom instruction. Okay. I don't see that being necessary now if we have a, one device per child. And I like to get feedback from, not tonight, but at some point in time from our building administrators and even staff members. Is it a distraction during the course of the educational day? I'm not saying we don't allow cellphones. I'm just saying, I know some other districts in the area have done it, that they're off, you know, or they're in their pocket during, or wherever, in their backpack during classroom studies and they're using the issued device for whatever means that they have to use it for. Just a thought, I'm just putting it out there. I know back when it was the educational piece of that device. I don't think that's necessary anymore, but if it is, I'd like to hear that.
Just with that, Al, just with the welcome letters that came home, I noticed that was a piece that was outlined as to no cellphone use in classrooms and then open house, me and the teachers had a sign up that said, you know, no cellphone use. So I think just from the observations, it seems like it's something that most teachers are not.
I think, no, I agree with that, but I believe it comes from the board as a part of a policy. It has more teeth, you know? And if, if some of those staff members can come forward and say, no, we use it and we allow the kids to use it, that's one thing. But I think now with that one-to-one device per child, is there a necessity for it? That's all.
I just want to add to that, is there a problem with cellphone usage in the buildings?
I see some smiles.
I'll stand up to the high school and say, no, there's not. The majority of teachers do allow students to utilize them for work purposes.
And the students are respectful of when they can use their cellphones or not use their cellphones?
They very much are.
Okay.
Mr. Murphy, can you do that as a survey, the teachers though? Can you, you know, at some point do that as a more formalized survey?
Absolutely.
I'm just curious as to what, you know, what the surface appearance is versus what may be beneath the surface that they may respond to at an anonymous level.
No problem.
Thank you.
I guess we'll go next. So the middle school, we certainly focused this year on not having cellphones in the classroom due to the one-to-one device. So the middle school is definitely different, the temptation is different. We saw last year, kids are using their devices to do TikTok videos or to just do things that is distracting during the day. Now, can there be some great utilization of a cellphone in the classroom like dodge while on talk? Well done with the right intention, absolutely. But we did see that with our staff last year that there was a bit of distraction and that their kids were going to the bathroom with their cellphones, coming back, you know, like just really utilizing their cellphones more than they should. So from the middle school perspective, which is absolutely different maturity level and everything else from the high school, we have kind of put a few more restraints on how we're really tackling that issue as a building. One of those being that when a kid signs out, if their cell, if they have their cellphone in the pocket, they need to leave it on their table before they go to the bathroom. So that they're really using the bathroom for the right purposes and not just to be on the phone or do whatever it is that they want to be doing in the bathroom instead of going to the bathroom for that purpose. The other thing we've done is really encouraged staff to like use our code of conduct and follow the policy with our cellphones. So if a student, if the teacher says, hey, here is an activity, if you'd like to pull out your cellphone when you're doing X or Y at that point, when the teacher is giving you the directive to or the okay to, that's about teaching, teacher responsibility and student responsibility and when you can use something and when it's time and place to use it. So that's really what we've been focusing on in the middle school. It's time and place, when you can do something, when you can't. But I'd say for the most part, especially this year, we've only had one cellphone that ended up in the main office, which is like a miracle, to say the least. So we're really proud of that. And the teachers all went through this expectation and the building wide expectation on day one. And we went through it every single period of the day. So it was very clear that you have this device in front of you, let's use it for those purposes and really start to take away some of those other distractions. But I, I wanted to stress that the middle school is much different from the high school as far as like teaching maturity and teaching responsibility so that when they get to the high school, they can use it more responsibly.
Thank you. I'm glad I brought that up because I wasn't aware of some of the implementations that have been in place to kind of discourage the everyday, you know, every minute use of the cellphones. So thank you. All right. Anybody else have anything for our directors? Okay. Student rep, Taki, you're on.
Okay. Starting off with the elementary school. As per the STEM teacher misuse, students started off with a bang with their new typing program to help build muscle memory of home row keys. In order to encourage students to practice outside of class, a Harry Potter themed competition was established between third, fourth and fifth graders. Each class was sorted into a Harry Potter house to earn points for their team by practicing keyboarding for 45 minutes outside of school every week. Currently Slytherin is in the lead, but Gryffindor only trails by 10 points. That's some good competition.
Gryffindor has to come through in the end.
Moving on to the middle school, modified sports are on full swing and it is exciting to see how many students are participating in modified fall sports. There was the first building wide assembly on Friday and it was incredible. Jared Campbell was a fantastic way to start the year off and students and staff really embraced the positive message he was delivering through his music. Meet the Teacher Night was also last week and it was really nice to see many parents in the building walking around and learning about their student's schedule. Also, there's been a great start to the school year and Mrs. Coburn and Mr. Conrad are looking forward to working with students, teachers and the community as the year progresses. Onto the high school. The high school had an assembly for ninth and 10th graders presented by Mr. Jared Campbell. Mr. Campbell is an award-winning singer and songwriter from upstate New York and has been traveling the country performing for thousands of people and hundreds of schools over the past 15 years. The focus of his presentation centered around resiliency, dependency and the power of focus. The assembly was very well received by students and staff and Mr. Campbell did a great job. The high school has started their club meetings, including the interact club, student council, multicultural club, coding club, JYP, A, Model UN, FIT club, GSA, yearbook club, art club, mathletes and as well as a few others. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thanks. Okay. Patrick, I'm going to resource people personnel.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to thank all of our directors and administrators for the work they did over the summer preparing and for the opening of school. But a specific shout out to Ms. Samuel at the elementary school. Mr. McCormick isn't here yet and I'm sure she's very excited for him to be joining her on Friday. Mr. Freer, Mr. Zimmer and I have spent some time down there, but Ms. Samuel has really shouldered the responsibility of that building for the first few weeks. And any of you who have been in elementary school, you know what those first few weeks are truly like. And Ms. Samuel did mention, you know, kindergarten. You know, a few weeks ago I talked about our incoming kindergarten class, which we knew was a little bit smaller. But if you recall, there was a quarter of those students of that entire class that was entering that, that first day of school at the age of four. And on top of that, what we have found is a growing number, I think, of students that, and I'm assuming part of this is, you know, of COVID related, with very little experiences before they entered that building and some with none at all. You know, so Ms. Samuel has had a lot of conversations and spent a lot of time in that hallway working with those families very closely to helping them transition for them to be successful learners in that building. But I will say it's, I'm sure it's been a very exhausting month for Ms. Samuel. So I did want to point that out and thank her. I know a few people have mentioned Jared Campbell tonight, but to not talk about how incredibly talented he was at engaging with students, to see the way he could bring an entire cafeteria of students all the way up here, and you can hear that noise, to a pin drop within a second. He was so engaging, his message that he delivered was so positive. I think it was a great way to start the year. He did two shows at the elementary school, one at the middle school and as was mentioned, one for ninth and 10th graders. All very different shows and he really catered them to the age groups to talk and to really connect with them on the, the issues that they're, that they're dealing with. And he used song throughout and just what a, what a talented individual he was. When he was here, I didn't realize he remembered, he told us he was here 12 years ago. He performed at the high school. He remembered the show. He's got quite a memory. He knew names, he knew everything. But just want to thank him and thank the buildings for their, their warm welcome. And we are very excited to have him and what a great message he brought. This Thursday, I'm going to be hosting with our AIS staff at the elementary school, our open house. So what we do is about this time of year, each year, we invite parents of students who qualify for AIS services. At the beginning of the year, we screen all the students to see who qualifies. We invite them in, we talk about the entrance criteria for receiving AI services, the different levels of supports, what it looks like, exit criteria, because the goal is always to exit from those services once you're back up to par, but, and they provide some strategies for parents too. What, just anecdotally, a little bit from what we're finding, it's a very busy time of year, families are very busy. We hold open houses in the beginning of the year. So I do think for next year, we're going to look at a different way of approaching it and try to incorporate a lot of this into our open houses. So we're not looking at an additional night for parents because, you know, we moved back to in-person for this year and we reach out to a lot of the parents and I've noticed that some of them had said they couldn't attend. You know, just the busyness of everyday life. So we're going to look at a different way, I think, of approaching it for next year. But we will be hosting it this year. And any of those parents that can't attend, our staff always has individual one-on-one conversations with them. But just for the future too, I think, you know, sometimes a student may not qualify at the beginning of the year. So they may not attend, but that same student may qualify in January or February or March. So to put that information out to all parents at the open house, I think is, is going to be our approach just moving forward. And lastly, I got a call today from the state ed department. So I was wondering why, why they're calling you. And when the, when the individual got on the, got on the phone, she said, don't worry, it's a good call. And the, the purpose of the call, which I was excited to hear. So the individual was from a, she was a project assistant for sustainability and support. And what the, what some members of state ed are tasked to do with is they're recognizing a concern that we talked about when we got the ARP-ESR money was that this was a one-shot boost. And, you know, the fear of always getting that one-shot boost is when you start to talk about staff and how you sustain that moving forward. You know, some of the things we can spend money on might be a one-time thing that we need to put in place or to replace. But when you're talking about staff, you're talking about, you know, an ongoing cost. So the idea of this team is that they're looking to partner with districts to try to find ways how we sustain some of those initiatives or those staff members that we put into place with that money. I don't know if that means they have a pool of money coming from somewhere. They didn't, they didn't come out and say that, although that was going to be my question. But we do have a conference call set up with them for the middle of October to talk about that. So I was excited to hear that they're recognizing that, you know, some of the things that we put into place with that money, we'd like to keep so, and helping us to do that. So I'll keep you updated on that. It's, it's around the middle of October. We haven't finalized the date. They gave us a week in October that we'll be getting on the, on the phone with them to talk about that. So I'm hoping for some positive results of that conversation.
Any questions for Dr. Boyd? Okay. Our superintendent?
Okay. So as you heard tonight, we had our community forum. Thank you to those that came out for that. And again, if anyone has any questions related to our propositions, to please reach out to the district. With that said, there are some upcoming, we call them roadshow dates. So we will be at the football game this Friday evening. It's a teacher appreciation game. We'll be there at the beginning of that for anyone who needs information or has a question. The HSA, our support association, will be hosting a Stuff the Bus event this Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Hannaford McDonald's. We will have a station set up there as well to, to give information out. But the main goal of that event is obviously to help our local food pantries. It's an event that HSA puts on every year. We'll be attending all of the upcoming October PTA meetings. Lindsay and I will be at the Rotary meeting at 7:00 AM on October 5th to present to the Rotary. Homecoming event on October 14th is another football game. Again, we'll have that station set up. For those that attended this past Friday, not too many folks stopped by the tent, but I think seeing that visual that we're out there and we're there if they have any questions and a lot of people giving some positive feedback as they walk by. So that was nice to hear. And then we have an event on October 15th in the morning, the town soccer camp. And Lindsay and I will be at that as a last ditch effort to get information into the hands of our community. I think it was mentioned a couple of times this week, but Mr. McCormick will begin at the elementary school on Friday. For those that may have seen him around at open houses or during interviews, he loves crazy socks. So the elementary school will be celebrating Crazy Sock Day on Friday as a welcome to Mr. McCormick. So that's nice to see. Just a shout out to the community. We had a wonderful turnout at this past Friday's alumni game and they recognized Carl Relier. It just, it was a great community feel to have that facility filled to the gills with folks. So we'll have a couple of more events out there in the coming weeks. So encourage people to come out to those events. I was at all of the curriculum evenings, back to school nights, open houses. Every school calls it something different. And to echo what Mr. Bacassius said, they all ran extremely well and they were packed, which was great to see. It was nice to get our families back into the buildings, to see the teachers up, up close and personal. It was, it was good evenings each, each of those nights. I know I mentioned this in a prior update, but we will be offering parents that would like a parent teacher conference remotely. We will allow that to occur, but teachers will be in session on those parent conferences here in the buildings. But any parent that feels that they need to do it remotely, we will make an accommodation for that. The senior administrators, myself, Dr. Boyd and Mr. Zimmer, attended the Fall NISCUS Conference last weekend and that was a very big success. And one of the things that came out of this, and I know I said it last year, is Dr. Rosa, the, the new commissioner last year, mentioned that the state education department is becoming, her goal is to make them friendlier and more approachable. And just the fact that you got a phone call to say that folks at state ed want to work with us to try to, to make, make a difference in our local schools, that's coming across loud and clear when you hear her speak. So I do encourage if anyone gets a chance to meet the commissioner or the deputy commissioner at any event, to please do so because it's very inspiring. So in, in August, we adopted our safety plan after the 30-day review that we had to have the plan up on our website for the 30 days as required by, by the state. And we adopted that at the end of August. Now that we have a school resource officer, it is in our, you know, behooves us to make sure that that school resource officer is reflected in our school district safety plan. So tomorrow we will be putting up an amended safety plan for another 30-day review. And then we will adopt that program or that safety plan that has that addendum attached to it in November. So look out for that. And I believe.
Just, just a point of clarification on that. That 30-day review period is a public review, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Parents in the community can go on, view that and...
Correct. And I will send, I will send a robo-email out to parents tomorrow to explain that the only change in the safety plan is just adding the, the board-appointed school resource officer position into the plan so that they know that was there. We had discussed that earlier in the summer and we did not have a contract at that point, so I couldn't include it in that review. But so to hit that September 1 date, we wanted to make sure that the plan was there, so that we hit our, our September 1 date. Now that the contract is in place, we're going to go ahead and make that amendment now. We were going to do that later, but I think sooner is probably better. And then those conversations with the town of Lloyd will continue with the hopes of expanding that in the future. Also, to the point of the panorama survey, Mr. Zimmer is not with us this evening, but he has been working on that. And part of that plan, we'd like to tailor some questions around community feedback on the SRO plan, so that we have some feedback from folks from, from across the, the community. So we're working to try to, it's, it's a little bit more difficult with the panorama survey because the questions are sort of tailored in a certain way, so we're trying to find a way to make some edits to them on our own end, it's not just a canned product. So, so we have some calls into the, to the folks to see how we can make those changes.
Right, so you might add questions or...
Modify questions that are there to...
Modify, so long as it doesn't take away from the validity of the...
Correct. And quite honestly, if we can just add a question to the end where it's just an open, I think sometimes those open-ended questions get more feedback than, than ones that maybe tailored in a certain way.
Right.
So that's all that I have right now.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, moving on, under Board of Education, new business polling service agreement on the, for the Highland Central School District and Ulster County Board of Elections. Be resolved, the Board of Education, based upon the recommendation of superintendent, approve the attached polling service agreement between Highland Central School District and the Ulster County Board of Elections for the special meeting capital project vote on Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, second by Heather. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? So carry. One item under new business, just an update, the support service committee met last week in anticipation of a positive outcome and being proactive. We had some discussion on how the project would be phased moving forward from 2022 and 2024. I know we put out to the community that by the end of 2024, the project will be completed either, you know, Proposition 1 or both propositions. With that being said, we had asked our design team to provide some options of what they felt and what the support service agreed to and what we felt would be proper for the 2023 summer, and then what we're looking at for the 2024 summer. In a nutshell, it's probably going to be the items that are going to be most available because of the supply chain that's going on in the construction industry right now. So those items would be what we would address as floor tile, floor tile abatement, ceiling tile, ceiling grid, those items are usually readily available, so we're going to try to package the project to get those going during the 23 school year, summer, sorry. So that was the gist of the support service meeting. We don't have one planned, but I'm sure after the vote, we're hoping that it's a positive vote, we'll, we'll sit down and, and have a real discussion with our design team and see where it's going to fall as far as completion, design, submission to SED, approval from SED, and putting bids out on the street. So we'll keep you updated. Anybody have anything for new business? Old business?
I just wanted to ask a quick question, we got this on the table today, is that from Ms. Meyer's presentation or was this additional information? I just, I think it's phenomenal, I think it's great information, it's very well put together, so just wanted to recognize.
Yeah, that brochure is created every year through the high school, so it was, we felt it was important that you got a copy of it. I don't know if you've gotten copies in prior years.
I don't recall.
I know I personally have not seen them before, so I was pretty excited when they were brought down to me this year. Quite honestly, they could have been brought to me last September and I don't remember, but before that, obviously at the elementary school, I didn't see it. But we will be sharing it with our cabinet as well, so that they can see all of the great things that are going on at the high school. And if you turn it over, it's just pretty amazing of all the different colleges that, they're not all colleges that students went to this past year, but it's a compilation of colleges over the last number of years, so...
Correct me if I'm wrong, this is Holly Brooker's office producing this for the schools, or was this internal?
Holly.
It's Holly. So...
That's all the information, the guy in his office, I guess, the Holly.
Yep.
Very nice. So, you know, this is used both by high school students to present their, their high school, it's for families visiting, sometimes you have families stop in and want to know more about Highland Schools. So it's used in a lot of different ways, but it certainly represents our high school very well.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I just hadn't seen it before, but it's great, I like it, thank you.
Anything else, old business? Under miscellaneous, good welfare of the district, just a reminder that we are meeting with our attorneys soon, so if you have questions...
Or even topics, so that we can determine which attorneys from the, the firm will be in attendance that night. We're planning on having them come to visit with the board on October 11th, so they've asked for topics so that they can send the, the most knowledgeable attorneys in those particular areas.
One, one topic I had mentioned to Joel, we're into negotiations, so an attorney that's familiar with negotiations to come forward, so I'm sure we'll have some questions there. Speaking of that, just a reminder that we have two units that contracts expire the end of 20, June of 23. Just try to get meetings together and get the groundwork in place and start, you know, moving forward. I know we were going to kind of sit low a little bit because of the capital project, but that's three weeks away, so let's kind of gear up and, and move our contract negotiations forward. Anybody else have anything? All right, we'll open the meeting up to public comment. There's Megan, I could see her in there. No public comment, we'll close public comment and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Heather.
No executive session.
No executive session.
Not unless you need one.
Unless someone hasn't...
Then I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I don't know why you have to approve a adjournment, who wouldn't want to adjourn? Heather and Ed.
Joel and Joyce.
You got a second, you got Ed as a second.
I have another meeting tonight, so...
All of the favor?
Aye.
Pose? So carry. Thank you all.